We've got a print title.
No pressure.
Do we get a terminal?
I think if you hit enter, maybe. I don't know. Hopefully. That's weird. Still waiting for the live video to come out. We may just have to go without Facebook again.
Chief? I have a message for you.
John Mark, I don't guess you would know anything that... Why should I hit that? I just hit something that's probably going to make it.
It's the standard.
Usually it's the best thing to start test now. Oh, do we have to use a persistent string?
Or you touch the computer. Either one of those is bad.
But now we're on test, so I don't know if that's... See if I can go back. Because we've got the titles in there, but it's not coming out. Do what? Oh, she's on there. It's not bad. This is... We're trying to get Facebook to work. No, Irma's on there.
It's recording, yes. We're just not getting Facebook live.
Yeah, it's supposed to come automatically when we do that, but... I can text Barbara and just tell her we'll just have to put it up like we did the last time it didn't work if... We can go ahead.
We can go ahead.
Showtime.
Okay. Commissioner's Court of Brazos County will meet regular session on February 23rd, 2021. 10:00 AM, Commissioner's courtroom in the county administration building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. Due to closure in the courthouse to bad weather, items for the February 15th, 2021 agenda will be taken up also on this agenda. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance and invocation pledge of allegiance for the U.S. Texas flag, Commissioner Aldous F. Leboz.
Eternal and everlasting. We ask that you continue to bless us as you have in Brazos County. We ask that you look after those who have done such a wonderful job and bless them of getting us through last week for our essential services and the sacrifices they made personally in order to get us through. We thank you for their service. We ask that you continue to bless them and their families. We ask that you give us wisdom and your understanding and knowledge today as we seek to represent the needs of Brazos County. We ask all these things in your eternal name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag.
Pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
The second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none. We will consider and take action on Agenda Items 3 and 6 for February 23rd, 2021. Due to bad weather and closure, also the items 3 through 23 for the agenda of February the 16th, 2021. Number 3 is request from Avery Martin for the exception to travel policy regarding maximum hotel rate of $96 in Abilene, Texas from February the 4th through the 6th, 2021. Avery attended the Patriot Junior Market Steer Show. There was no host hotels, so the difference is reimbursement of $122.40.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I wanted to mention that Commissioner Colley's on the line. I'd urge you second. Thank you, Commissioner. She's on the line, so we've got a full court this morning. Number 6 is payment of claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County. Claims number 810-5901 through claim number 810-5935 and claims 9001-362 through claim number 9001-368.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries.
Judge, just for clarification, we did not have personnel, I'm assuming, for...
I believe that's correct. I looked. I didn't see any personnel action in this agenda. I think it's on the next previous. So, and I think we'll wait till the end to catch the... Well, with just acknowledgement of the monthly reports submitted, February of 2021, we'll acknowledge those. And then we'll skip the 8 and 9. We'll do that at the end of the next one. But we'll go to number 4, due to bad weather and courthouse closure actions to be taken on Agenda 3 through 23 for the February 16th, 2021. And... Number 3 is Resolution 21-006 authorizing the submission of a grant application for Brazos County Specialty Court.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 4 is acceptance of cash donation for the Commissioner's Court from Russell Ford in the amount of $1,000 for informational magnets for Precinct 2.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 5 is acceptance of donation to two drainage easements from the City of Bryan, DBA Bryan, Texas Utilities for .034 and .105 acre to be used as improvements to be done on Muffin Road, Precinct 4.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 6 is approval for emergency management to apply for an FY 2021 Emergency Management Grant Program, EMPG, through Texas Department of Emergency Management.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 7 is approval of job description.
Move approval A and B.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve A and B. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 8 is request from insurance office for payment authorization to GSG Inc. for vinyl machine stock vinyl in the amount of $181.02 per sort that was not obtained in advance.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 9 is approval of the following committee to for evaluation proposals for R.I.P.C.I.P. 21618 Brazos County Bridge Repair.
Move approval A through G.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 10 is request from Fleet Services for additional funding to cover FY 2020 invoices for equipment to be placed in four road bridge replacement trucks in the amount of $4,823.92. Equipment was received before September 30, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 11 is permission to advertise an auction for surplus property.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 12 is permission to advertise for bid 21-118 janitorial trash liners.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 13 is permission to advertise for bid R.I.P. 21618 Brazos County Road Bridge Repair.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 14 is renewal of 21-092R for pharmaceuticals with contract pharmacy.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 15 is ratification of interlocal agreement between City of Bryan, Brazos County, Brazos County Insurance Department，在 inmate services.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 16 is consider and take action on Welborn Special Utility District Utility Permit to construct a road board for a 1-inch waterline crossing under Straub Road, 1,200 feet east of Thousand Oaks Road, sites located Precinct 1.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 17 is consider and take action on Wicksen Creek Special Utility District Utility Permit to construct a road board for a 1-inch waterline crossing under Kupeski Lane, 1,600 feet southwest of Dick Elliott Road, sites located Precinct 2.
Move approval. Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 18 is consider and take action on Brazos WiFi Utility Permit to conduct a four bore... Four road bores under cargo drive to install a fiber optic communication cable for internet services, sites located Precinct 2.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 19 is consider and take action on Brazos WiFi Utility Permit to conduct six road bores under Oak Hollow Circle for a fiber optic cable internet services, sites located Precinct 2.
Move approval.
Second. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 20 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval A through F.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve A through F.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 21 is budget amendments, budget amendments FY 20/21, 20.1 through 20.4.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 22 is personnel change status.
Move approval A and H.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
None. Motion carries. Number 23 is payment of claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 810-5741 through claim number 810-5900 and claim number 9001-323 through claim number 9001-361.
Second.
Move approval.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
None. Motion carries. Number 24 is acknowledgement of the annual financial report of MHMR for FY 2020. Number 25 is juvenile directors' report on detention population. Lyndon.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Would you like me to just give this week's report or do you want one from last week, too?
I had trouble understanding that.
This week's fine.
This week?
This week?
Okay. I just didn't know if you want me to go back or not.
No, that's right.
Okay. We are currently in juvenile detention. We have 20 juveniles, 17 males and three females. Five are in ISO due to the protocols, and we have 22 juveniles on monitor. And I think y'all are aware that we did have some issues out there with a sprinkler system that burst. So I've probably got 10 or 12 officers displaced right now and in different... Another... Well, we've made room for them, so anyway, that'll be probably six to eight weeks while they're working on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 26 is insurance report on inmate population. Kevin.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Our population this morning is 521, 452 males, 69 females. We have 30 on electronic monitor and five are pending. Right now, our COVID report, we have one positive inmate and we have 13 that are quarantined. We have six total staff out. Four are isolated and two are quarantined. And we fared pretty well during the weather, just so y'all know, and I just wanted to thank our maintenance department. They did some stuff to stay ahead of it and they were very responsive and just want to acknowledge them, so thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. Wasn't anything on the last agenda we needed to go back to, was there? I don't believe so. Okay. Number 27 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
With the judge, as I say, with the... In talking to our emergency management coordinator, she wanted me to, on her behalf, express thanks to our essential workers, first responders and community at large for doing such a phenomenal job in helping us deal with the hardships that we had last week. So please, let me, in her absence, convey her thanks to everyone as well as ours as a Commissioner's Court. And also that people should continue to look at their repairs and things that they're doing and maintain good records. And there's information about applying for relief as far as our FEMA disaster declaration, if they need to do those things in the future.
Yeah. Good documentation is what it's going to take, so it's good. Number 28 is call for citizens' input and our concerns. And Chief, you want to give us kind of an update on yesterday's vaccination, kind of? I think it'd be okay to... We won't respond, but we'll listen to your report. I think it's good for the public and for the Commissioner's Court to kind of know how things went yesterday.
If Bruce will kindly waive the time limit. Thank you very much, because it'll probably be 30 or 45 minutes. No, just kidding.
Thank you for keeping it brief.
Judge, Commissioners, if you don't mind, just one quick personal observation, since Chris Kirk and I have departed the AO, the command staff no longer looks like a senior living center. When I look at the back row, there's a much younger looking generation back there. The good news is, is that yesterday, your vaccination hub administered 1,900 doses. It was a smidge below that, but for effect, I just rounded it to 1,900. So they were very busy and very effective yesterday. There's really not an issue with the hub itself. The hub is a well-oiled machine between the paid staff that's out there, the emergency managers, the TEAC's paid staff, volunteers that are there with us, the American Red Cross, BV Cell. I mean, everyone's out there just doing remarkable work, and we couldn't do it without the volunteers. Let me just back up a bit, a little bit of history. I talked about it a little bit last time that I was here. But this whole adventure started on January the 5th at a Zoom meeting. And during that meeting, the judge sent me a text and asked if I'd be up to helping Brazos County respond to this vaccination need. And I said that I would. So that was January the 5th. The very next day, we started the planning process. We met with the Health Science Center, met with St. Joseph, met with all the players that very next day and got the ball rolling. On January the 21st, the hub was up and running, although we did not have any vaccines. We did a walkthrough. We decided, yeah, this is going to work. And the very next Thursday, we pushed through 300 doses and it went very, very well. The next week, we had 5,000 doses. That went very well also. No problems getting 5,000 doses out there. I think they had 11 doses left at the end of the week. They took them back to the St. Joseph ER and administered to those that were people in the ER. Now, in our little pea brains, we thought we were getting 5,000 again the next week. So we scheduled 5,000 people for the next week, but we only got 2,000 vaccines. So you could just imagine the turmoil that can cause in the scheduling process. And I want to talk about the scheduling process just a bit more later here this morning. But that is the weak link, and that's what Jim Stewart is going to be focusing on while I'm here for the next week or so. Then the next week, we were given 3,000 doses. Well, if you recall, that was last week. So no doses were administered last week, which put us behind the power curve as far as pushing out doses. This week, the state allocated another 4,000 doses to the hub. So what we're trying to push through this week is 7,000 doses. And the staff has assured me that we're going to do it. We just got to get the people in the door out there. The vaccine administration piece of it is in place and we're going to do it. So we're working very diligently to make that happen this week, 7,000 doses. Oftentimes, I hear comparisons to Washington County. Well, they're getting 3,000 doses and they're pushing them through in one day. Well, we could do that also. But that's not the way we get the doses. If they gave us 3,000 doses and we had a small population like Washington County does, we could set up either a walkthrough or drive-through and we could push out 3,000 doses a day. But that's not the future of Brazos County. 3,000 doses a day is not going to cut it. We're going to have to get much larger than that as we start looking at the rest of the county. And I'd remind you that you're not just advocating for Brazos County, you're advocating for the Brazos Valley. Because all these other counties look to you to provide services, grocery stores, department stores, medical care and so on. And the vaccination is... They're also looking to you to provide that for them. Let's talk a bit about the waitlist. Today, this morning, at the St. Joseph waitlist, there are 55,000 people on it. So people that go online and say ugly things about the vaccination hub, they don't have the big picture. There's 55,000 people on the list that would like to get the vaccination. Of that 55,000, there's 20,000 people on there that are in the 1A, 1B category. So that's what we're really focused on right now as we get the vaccines. So... Let's talk about the registration process as it currently exists. We inherited a system in which St. Joseph Hospital, which was the primary provider for the area for vaccinations for COVID-19. A week after we started this, creating this vaccination hub, they were designated by the state of Texas as a vaccination hub. And all the vaccines were going to be pushed to St. Joseph's for this area. Now bear in mind, St. Joseph serves nine counties, not just seven, not just one, nine counties. And so they're looking at the big picture. So they were very happy to see Brazos County step up and agree to start running this vaccination hub for them. So they can focus on the medical vaccine administration piece and they didn't have to worry about running the hub piece. So they're very, very grateful for what we've done. But what we inherited is that St. Joseph has this waitlist. And those of you that have gone online to the St. Joseph portal, you can see, if you want to register, you click on that and it walks you through some questions, name, rank, serial number, your age in particular, and do you have any medical conditions? There's no truth check on that registration. So I'll have people say to me, well, gosh, that person doesn't look old enough or that person may have a medical condition that puts them into the 1B group. We do not have COVID vaccine police that check people that come in the door to make sure they're eligible to actually get the vaccine. If little Jimmy Stewart registers and says, "I'm a 1B person," for either because of my age or because of a medical condition, we accept that as a fact. We accept it as a fact. So the 55,000 people, 20,000 are going to get invites to come in and get a vaccine when we have the vaccines. But that is the transition point that we have with this list. From St. Joseph via spreadsheet, it goes to the Health Science Center. And through their RedCap software system, the emails are pushed out and the appointments are made. So that's one thing that I'm going to try to resolve this week. Because it requires a human being at St. Joseph to populate this spreadsheet, push it over to the Health Science Center, they incorporate it into the RedCap database and push out the email inviting you to come and get a vaccine. And you'll respond to that and then they'll book you at time. It's a bit awkward. It's not the great way to do it, and we're going to try to fix that. But that's what was in place when we started this thing. You know, our marching orders were to get this thing going, and that's what we did. We took what we had available to us and we made it work. The hub is working magnificently. The registration piece, we're still working on that. The underserved community is a big part of what we're looking at. So yesterday, 10 o'clock, 211 and the call center went live. Now, 211 broke yesterday, not because of us. It just happened to break. My phone was blown up with people that tell me that the 211 phone is not working. Well, it wasn't, but it's not because of Brazos County. So if you don't have internet access or you don't have an email, you can call 211. They'll try... I'm so sorry, folks. I've broken it.
We'll just have to come yourself.
Have to keep these hands under control here. You call 211 and they'll walk you through the process of registering.
Irma has a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I have a question, sir.
Go ahead.
With regards to the reports you're making, are there any demographics captured? Do we know who we're serving and which communities or zip codes are we capturing any of that data?
Commissioner, I'm not. I am not. I could do that. As part of your registration, you do indicate your zip code and we can go in and parse that information out. I can tell you anecdotally, there is a cross... There is a... Was there another question?
I would like to recommend that we do that. It's real important that we know who we're serving and who's... Who has a need that we may not be serving. I think that would give us a good picture of where we need to go and it would add to our service.
Commissioner, I would agree, and I've made it quite clear from the get-go that my mission is to get the injection in every arm in the Brazos Valley, without exception. But if it'd be helpful to know the demographics, I'll do what I can to collect that data and we'll push it out to the court so that everybody has that.
Thank you.
So the 211 call center established live, people that cannot. We've also had community outreach. Ray Arrington from the American Red Cross and the Carver Camp community has reached out to us. I've had a meeting with them. And the city council members from the City of Bryan, he's compiled a list of people in his community that are interested in the vaccine. We did an outreach to Santa Teresa's Church this past Sunday, where we actually went out, set up with laptops and registered people into the system. And we'll do that in all the underserved communities in Brazos County. Judge, Commissioners, that's all I have. And I will be in the... I'll stay in the area here if you have any questions. I know we can't really talk right now, but I'll be in the area and we'll answer any questions you might have. I know we can't really talk right now, but I'll be in the area and we'll answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. I'm glad you were here and able to kind of give us and the public an update about how things are going. You're the right guy for the job. Glad to count you as one of my friends.
Judge Peters, I was gonna just add to that. We need to commend Chief Stewart and all of his staff for the work they're doing. They're, they're doing it right.
He's got all his staff in his pocket. Okay, so I think the next item is to adjourn. If nothing else, we'll adjourn. Like.
Do you have a cold?
Well, I think it's allergies. I've been feeding and breathing a bunch of.